I call this Board of Trustees Work Study Meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees Order at six o'clock PM on May ninth, 2024. For the record, board members, President R., Sally Garrett, Kara Harbache, Kim Parady, Eliana Garza-Rojas, Randy Shackton, and myself, Cassandra Hadfield. Miss Penobidas may be joining us by video momentarily. We constitute a forum and make in that business on behalf of the district. The next item is Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak here in Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and placed in the designated location prior to opening of the meeting. For this meeting, based on Board Policy VED Local, each speaker's comments will be limited to the posted agenda items. Ms. Canada, do we have anyone wishing to speak? Okay, with no one wishing to speak, we will move on to our next agenda item, item number three, Work Study Discussion Items, and our first one is 3A Pre-K Discussion. Mr. Blackford.
Thank you, all. This is President Hadfield. My board members, good to everybody tonight. Wanted to share with you, well, we shared with the Bond Oversight Committee a few days ago regarding the options that we're looking at for pre-K. So I'm going to go ahead and explain them here. Our agenda is to update our discussion to date and then look at some options. Again, this is a timeline that you've seen several times before or in the analysis and standards section there and replacement buckets overall, and it does have some effect on innovation because the pre-K work was planned for and the bond planning standards part of innovation, so that's replacement buckets overall about this specifically. Timeline as far as discussions around pre-K, we first discussed this with the Bond Oversight Committee in January, then we discussed it as part of the overall facilities master plan with the overview with the district leadership in February, as well as with the trustees in February, and then here in April, again, we discussed the updated capacity information with trustees, had a pretty extended discussion with the Bond Oversight Committee at the April meeting, and now, of course, we're meeting tonight to discuss a little bit more about pre-K and share what we went over with the Bond Oversight Committee a few days ago. This is a recap of the points that were discussed with the Bond Oversight Committee at the January meeting, the Bond Oversight Committee. The key things that we looked at and we had Tim Holcomb, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, as well as Sandy Meyer, our Director of Pre-K, and we looked at, talking specifically about the challenges that they face. And I'll just quickly touch on these. Additional schools are not optimized for play-based and on-learning. There can be extended transition times, and restrooms do not fit for the purpose. Lack of balanced capacity on the school where there's not an even cohort across the grades that are present at that school can lead to some challenges as well. And across our district, there are some significant shifts depending on the area of the district that you're in in terms of, we have a lower capture rate in the north of our district where we have folks that are eligible but aren't participating. In the west part of the district, we are turning people away that would be willing to pay tuition for pre-K. So we've kind of got the whole spectrum as we move across our district. And the goals that we identified, talking with Kim and with Sandy, are providing consistently available optimized and innovative space for early childhood needs and to support teacher retention and retention. Okay, so here is a slide that shows, talks a little bit about that utilization in the spectrum across our district that I mentioned just a moment ago. You can see the markers that are blue represent campuses that have ninety percent or greater utilization. When you say utilization, that's the percentage of eligible four-year-old pre-K students that take advantage of free pre-K that they don't have to pay for. So you can see on the west side, we're very well utilized, and towards the north, we're not as well utilized. We've got the room to grow to meet some of those needs, and that is reflected in the bond plan that was done. That's where the campuses were identified for pre-K work. You can see the markers that are circled are the ones that were identified for pre-K renovation Are there any questions about this slide? Yes, ma'am.
And I am hoping this is a question you can answer, if not, just tell me that. I'm curious if we know more about the red, like, what's the, is this a demographic issue of west versus north? Like, what is making the families on the west utilize what we're offering versus why are the families on the north just not? You know, like, my concern is that if we're talking about what to do, are we even, are these families aren't even interested to begin with? It doesn't matter what we do. Just a question for, I guess, considerations.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I can answer that question for you, yes, ma'am.
Do you think it's housing developments? Like, maybe housing is exploding on the west side?
My, and this is conjecture on my part, but I'll tell you what I think. My thought is that families on the west side see more value, and if they see the value, they see the benefit for their kids. And maybe the families on the north don't understand how much it could benefit their kids to participate. I think there might be some opportunities there for us to do a little marketing on the benefits because there are significant benefits where pre-K is high-quality, more outcomes for our students.
And do we know if those kids on the north side, are they, because we know that there are kids, are they going to private pre-Ks or they just not going to pre-K at all?
That is not, David, that I have seen specifically, so I can't really answer that question directly.
I will tell you that we have about nine hundred kids as of today, maybe more, that have enrolled in pre-K that are, and I don't know that we've tracked where they are, but I think we could probably get that information from Lance so we can look and see comparing to where they're located.
If I remember, somebody will have to check to know that the last study from the demographer in the new housing developments, Eliana, that they were low yield on kids. Somebody's going to have to fact-check that, but I remember that conversation that we were surprised at that time that it was low yield on kids in the new housing. It could have changed.
Oh, no, I hear what you're saying. That is correct.
Is it everything?
The newer housing developments that were, like, west side of Farmers Branch, like, I did this conversation, I can see to that. They were like, there's all this development going in across the cross, and then there was a conversation with the board about, we just don't think there's any kids there. So we didn't need to make any adjustments to schools at that point, and I think that ended up actually playing out to fit, we just haven't gotten enough.
They're mainly urban.
Right. Well, that, and that's all established already. That's all stuff that, those are neighborhoods and apartments and everything that are already there.
It's built up, it's for the most part built out.
But why are they utilizing this versus the northern?
I think there's, to your question as well, one of the things that, for reference to the value, when I talked to Lacey Tilly not too terribly long ago, she said that she has had people, at least once this year, maybe twice, families that come in to tour Bush, and they, I mean, her wife is pregnant, they don't even have a newborn, she's scouting middle schools on down the road where they purchase a house. So the value within it is, I think, probably a factor of how the community education is set up in those places.
All right, so I'm going to keep going here. So I want to introduce a couple of options. I'm just going to run through the options and I'm going to tell us a little bit of the story, and then we'll come back and talk about the options again. So you'll see this next slide after this one here in just a minute. But overall, our strategy is to provide equitable access to highly-resourced schools, make sure they're adequate educationally, and make sure we support sound operational budgets in our approach to facilities. And this is another slide I think is really important in that physical environment has an effect on student outcomes, but it's half as important as teachers being affected. So whatever we do for facilities, we want to support teachers being affected. So that's always in our mind as we are thinking about how to take care of our kids at our facilities. And this is just a summary that you've already seen in terms of our current capacity situation. We do have a good amount of excess capacity in our district, so we're keeping that in mind as well. Overall, the pre-K timeline in Texas in nineteen eighty-five, that was the first time Texas began to offer half-day state-supported pre-K. Twenty fifteen, they established curriculum. We established curriculum, teacher training, progress monitoring, they, you could say they, we as a state got serious about it, and then in twenty nineteen, legislature mandated full-day pre-K, but funding remains at half-day levels. And this slide was, we're going to look at it in a different way in the next slide, but this kind of tells the story of the transition that happened when we moved from half-day to full-day. You can see we transitioned campuses away from half-day and we moved them all to full-day, and you can see what happened with the enrollment in that second column. So if we look at the enrollment in a different way, this is what it looks like, just for pre-K historical enrollment. So you can see that it has, ever since we went to full-day, it has trended up, and that's across two different political administrations. It has continued to trend up. So it seems like it's going to continue that way, and it certainly is an advance of what the projection was at the last demographic report. So that definitely looks like something we need to be thinking about. All right, so here are the options. The first option, which is the way that the bond planning was done, was distributed, where we have pre-K that's as close to home as we can provide. The spaces aren't really optimized for pre-K learning, they're just regular classrooms. You do have a little bit of extended transition time when you're going back and forth to a restroom down the hall versus a restroom that's in the, in the classroom itself. They're not as easy to support from a district leadership standpoint because you're trying to run around to all the different campuses and to do it consistently. And it's also a challenge because the campuses that were designated for pre-K are some of the smallest in our district. And that, in talking to teachers and talking to leadership, the feedback that we've gotten is they would rather have the square footage than the bathroom. So that's something that we thought about quite a bit. So the next option we have there is to provide a hybrid approach where we have a pre-K center which could accommodate the growth we're seeing, especially in the northeastern corner of our district. We're seeing a lot of pre-K growth there. Provides our highest-need students with the best learning environment, which I love. You would have a little bit of a transition from the center to a home campus. However, it's easier to support, and there's some opportunity to select strategic campuses for distributed sections. Then the next option is what I call Hybrid Two, where we might have a pre-K center in the north of the district as well as one in the west. This accommodates the growth that we're seeing as well as meets demand that we have for tuition-based pre-K that we're not currently able to meet. We're turning away, I think, over a hundred pre-K students right now that would pay tuition that we can't accommodate. Provides the most students with the best learning environment. Again, you still have a transition from the center to the home campus, but this would be the easiest to support from a leadership standpoint and consistency standpoint, and it gives us the most opportunity to be strategic in the campuses that we select for distributed sections. Again, none of these are all or not, well, distributed is all distributed, but if we did do a center, we're not talking about centers only, it's centers plus, if that makes sense. Okay, so now we get to the sto-
Sorry, sorry. So centers plus, but some schools would have no pre-K because all of their kids would go to a center?
Yes.
And then some schools would maintain their K, their look?
Yes. Yes. Okay. So just to give everyone kind of an overview of our elementary schools, Richard Dwight, this is something, a little exercise I went through that was very helpful for me, so I thought just in case you don't keep the floor plans of all of our elementaries in your head, this might help. Okay, so these are the three campuses, campuses that are slated for replacement. So all of these are set to be replaced per the twenty-three of bond planning. The next group, the next oldest group of campuses are these, Grino, McCoy, Roseme. These are sixties to seventies vintage. You can see the floor plan is very, very similar. They're not quite identical, but they're really close. They're very small, it's very difficult to accommodate our current program in these classrooms, as it is. Now, when you renovate six of these classrooms into a pre-K classroom, that becomes a real challenge to make that an effective campus across the board for the whole cohort, across each grade level. All right, the next group is Davis, Country Place, Kent, and McCamey. You can see we're starting to branch out a little bit now, you've got a little bit of variety. You can see the beginnings of what, several schools that we're going to build after this in Davis, where that, you've got that central hallway layout that provides kind of a spine for the whole building. But you can see in McCamey, there's still that previous version of the floor plan where you've got the two hallways and the center section all the way down the school. Again, these are starting to get a little larger, but actually, Country Place is the, I think, the lowest square footage across the district total, but it's been renovated, and it has, the renovations, I think, have really helped it become an effective campus. Here we have Rainwater, which is our oldest two-story facility, and we have Landry, which got a twenty-eighteen addition that incorporated the storm shelter. And we have the prototype schools, where we were pretty consistent for quite a few years, River State, Freeman, Thompson, Blanton, and the Quarter, which all have that central spine. It's a very efficient layout, the classrooms are getting a little bit bigger. There's some planning for speed, and I can tell you that going back through the plans, the first floor plan that actually had a label that was pre-K on it was in two thousand and five. And our average age of our facilities in this district is nineteen eighty-five. So that's an interesting point to consider. Then we get to Blair. This is a new approach. So we've got a two-story again, as well as an addition. So again, we're starting to get larger classrooms, more support spaces, the better support programs that we now have that we didn't have in the sixties and seventies and eighties. Here is Sarp, another two-story facility that was replaced in two thousand and five. And we have McCallum Strickland, this is very similar to Blair, it's reversed and flipped, but you can see the similarity there. Then we start getting to the more modern version, where we have La Vida, where you've got more of a pod setup, not really pod, but you've got villages and will around hallways. Some addition in twenty fifteen. Here you've got Good, which is our only three-story elementary. And here is Los Felinas, another two-story. And then we have our most recent addition, which is Sheffield, which is the most consistent with the way a lot of elementaries are built now with the pod concept, you have a village, and you do have, you can see there in the very bottom in the center, you have a group of six classrooms that do have built-in restrooms. So we have built-in restrooms on two campuses that are going to be remaining. One is Sheffield and one is Landry, where they have built-in restrooms in the classroom. But those are the only two that have that right now.
That was what I was going to ask you, because that was what you pointed out to the bond oversight committee. So Landry and Sheffield?
Yes, ma'am. And again, the thing I want to point out as we think about that is our teachers and our leadership both have told us that they would rather have the square footage in the bathroom given the choice, especially with the smaller square footage to begin with. So we thought about that a lot as we thought about these, these options, and I'm going to kind of show you what that might look like here in just a minute, but if y'all have any questions about these three, I'm not going to read through them again for the sake of time, but.
Can you just go back and clarify the scope?
Yes.
Because I think that's the key, you kept talking about bathrooms, but.
Yes, good point. So the way the budgeting was done for the bond, the pre-K scope that was identified in the bond planning was essentially, it was described as adding a bathroom to six classrooms. So you would address the transition time concern, and when you build a new pre-K space right now in a new facility, you typically do integrate a bathroom into the classroom. So it's understandable where they placed it, when we look at the map before, and you understand why they were looking at bathrooms. However, thinking about our limitations in terms of the square footage that we're starting with, and if we were to make the classrooms bigger when we did the renovations, you're taking away classrooms from some of our smallest campuses, which is less than ideal, which is why we felt like we wanted to probably recommend something a little different in terms of strategy to meet that priority that was established with pre-K from the bond planning. We still want to honor that priority in that planning, but maybe a little different strategy that would better help our teachers be as effective as they can be. So any questions before I keep going? Got a couple more slides.
Because essentially, to add the bathrooms, you're removing square footage from the classroom.
If we make the classrooms big enough to be appropriate for pre-K, then we're taking away the overall classroom count in the building. We're reducing it. Okay. So when we look at what it might look like, if we did the fully-distributed option, what I would recommend, what we would recommend as we think about this and what we're proposing to potentially integrate in the facilities master plan is do one renovation at a larger campus in the northern area, a couple of renovations at larger campuses in the southeastern area, and one renovation at a larger campus in the western area, so it's evenly distributed across the district. What it might look like for the hybrid one option was to do a renovation at a large campus in the northern area along with a pre-K center where they had that greatest need. So again, we're providing the best facilities for the area that's, for the students that have the greatest need in our district. And then again, two renovations at large campuses in the southeastern area and renovation of a large campus in the western area. And then where we do replacement schools in the southeastern area, of course, we could have pre-K space, space that was optimized for pre-K, but didn't those replacements. Okay, and the hybrid two option would potentially be a new pre-K center in the north, a new pre-K center in the west, and then replacement school with pre-K space in the southeast. So those are the, kind of how that might work in terms of where we would want to plan for those spaces. And that was all I had to share. So y'all have any other questions for the pre-K?
If we do a pre-K center, how many kids can it affect?
We would plan for around eight hundred, I think, is probably the sweet spot, based on the information that I've seen.
On the tenure, historical pre-K home and forecast, you have this in gray.
Yes.
Why is that in gray?
That's what the projection was. The dotted line shows what the projection was from our last demographic study.
Okay.
And the, it didn't show up because that print is black and white, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That last section where it shoots up in front of the dotted area, that's what it actually did instead of the projection.
Well, I like that you printed on both sides of the paper. I think that is efficient use of resources.
Well, you're right.
Thank you. I'm okay with no color. So I completely acknowledge the number of variables that we and y'all have in some of us right now. I mean, with the utilization study, the bond development, forecast, trend, you know, all of it. So, and they're, they're all moving, right? They're dynamic because they're not going to stay the same. What does, or what do these options from a financial standpoint do to our bond allocations since the bond scope was not a new building? You know, it was renovations. I mean, what impact, or have y'all gotten to that point of analyzing?
Well, the consideration was if we address the capacity utilization, it gives us the opportunity to get better in some areas. And so we wanted to see if we could, at the same time as we address our utilization, be physically responsible, we could also improve what we're doing in terms of pre-K specifically, that could have the potential to really help the performance of our schools almost across the board if we're able to deliver even higher quality pre-K than we are now. So we felt like that was an opportunity we didn't want to miss.
Do we have enough money from, to build centers in the bond if we went that way instead of, you know, it was allocated by, you know, here, build a budget, like we talked about, build a budget, or here's the money, and the scope was, you had smaller renovations inside existing schools? Or, I mean, another variable I think is, you know, focusing on the utilization study for that, is there an opportunity, you know, if, you know, whatever our path is on addressing the utilization study, if there's an opportunity for an existing facility to completely turn in to a gut and renovate instead of a new building?
I think there are, there's more, certainly there's more than one way to approach the problem, but.
That's not me figuring it out, that's you.
Yeah. But yes, yes, there is repurposing of facilities that we would certainly probably do. There is potentially, and again, it just goes back to how we address the capacity situation. If we address the capacity situation, we're able to do other things that could really have a lot of long-term benefits, so, but I do believe it's there and we could do it.
I think my concern overall is just from the utilization of bond funds. You know, pre-K obviously was a focus, we know that, that's where we want to be investment to be, that's what the community said, but, you know, if we move towards a center or bigger than originally scoped and budgeted, you know, from that, from the, or allocated from the citizen, what are we taking away? You know, what is at risk in the bond package from using that money? That's my, that is my concern.
We talked about it quite a bit with the Bond Oversight Committee. This is the shorter version that you guys are seeing tonight, but I will tell you that everyone on the Bond Oversight Committee landed on the hybrid two, well.
Hybrid.
Hybrid.
They were all hybrid, they were, most were hybrid two, but all.
Almost all of them were hybrid two. So they were embracing, President Hadfield was there, I mean, they were embracing the hybrid approach. So that was, we felt that, like that was good feedback, and in terms of strategy that they felt like was appropriate, so.
I mean, I think that probably is a great, you know, mix, but like I said, that doesn't erase the allocation of bond funds on what would we do, how are we going to do it?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did the Bond Oversight Committee see the pictures of the new pre-K center in Prosser that we went to tour?
No, we did not show the picture of the new pre-K center.
I was just curious. But some of them saw a pre-K center on the bond planning committee.
Okay.
Because that was one of the, that was one of the places they went, was to a pre-K center, not Prosser, but differently.
Agreed.
They did have the opportunity to hear from Tim Holcomb and Sandy Meyer directly.
Oh, good.
And they spoke quite a bit to the committee. So they did give pretty good detail, I feel like, as far as what that would look like, what the benefits would be of the more hands-on experiential learning versus, you know, what you could do in a traditional classroom environment.
And I only ask because Randy and I went to go see it, and just for the rest of the board's information, it's pretty amazing, and it does not look like a traditional school. I mean, it's, it's pretty incredible that the kids can be super-engaged, but it just doesn't look like a traditional school. It's a place-center-based type of environment, which I think would be beneficial, but it's interesting to see it.
Definitely.
Eliana, what was the amount of students they had? Was it over eight hundred?
It reached, was it seven hundred and fifty-something?
Yeah, it's not quite eight hundred yet. We are increasing, like.
She said they started off at five hundred and they slowly increased throughout the school year. But it's a very unique center. Everything is little, like, really tiny, like, you have a. Like you have to squat down to reach their level, but it was very engaging for them. I mean, my daughter just started kindergarten and I had to pay for tuition and I wanted her to go to school. And comparatively speaking, like for economically wise, right? I had to pay two days out of the week, four times a, for four weeks, I had to pay four hundred dollars. And full-time tuition in the schools were five hundred dollars. So it was a lot of money for us. But I just didn't, I didn't get an opportunity to send her to public school because there was no space. And so how many people are we missing out to get that opportunity to give them pre-K? And to say, wow, we're going to guide them in this path, we're going to show them how, what it's like to be in a classroom, to just steer them in the right direction and bring in a mix of kids into our schools. So, it's just a thought. I mean, I was extremely impressed with Prosperity and their center. Like it is, I wanted to live there. It was so awesome. And Randy and I were extremely impressed. Like the playground is not outside, it's on the inside, so the kids don't run away. I mean, it's very thought out, very precise, something like, again, and it's not a traditional setting, so.
Did you talk to any of the teachers? Did you get any feedback from how they felt in one center?
Yes, they loved it. They just wanted one more bathroom for the kids. So every area has a pod, and within the pod, they have multiple classrooms per se. And then within the area, so within the pod area, they have a restroom, but they only, it's only one restroom. So their only desire is to make like a little, just a little space to allow the kids to have stalls, so they can, multiple kids can go into the restrooms, because you can only send in one at a time. And their other complaint was they don't have a restroom to go to. So really, it wasn't, I mean, the space itself, there was no cafeteria. The gym and the music space was combined, so it was an inclusive space. I mean, it was, I'm very impressed, y'all. I'm very, very impressed that there's a possibility we could bring that to us and allow our kids to have some opportunities that are something that is beyond my, was beyond my dreams sending my kids. They have something called, if anybody's familiar with PlayStream, like a museum, it's embedded into their specials. So they get to go play in these special rooms that traditionally we would have to pay for. Like I don't know how many people get to do that on a daily basis. And we got a chance to see the kids play, we got a chance to see the kids eat and work together, and it's, it's pretty cool.
One of the things about it that was fascinating was how they were incorporating curriculum in with that. Because, I mean, frankly, you tell me we're going to do a school to, you know, two and three, four-year-olds, and I'm like, yeah, it's, yeah, I can play. And it was, it was things that were actually helping to systematically step in towards kindergarten.
So like fine motor skills, working on following the rules, things that we take for granted, that we teach our kids, that not necessarily everybody says, oh, make sure you do this, make sure you thread this through the paper, make sure you sit down down here. There's just some things that are already implemented, like Randy said, within the center to make it successful for all of the kids.
So, my question is, you know, fifteen years ago, whenever we built the Kelly pre-K center, then the birth rate went down, so we closed Kelly pre-K center, and we turned that into, I guess, a daycare. If we build these buildings and the birth rate goes down, because I would guess that most of these babies are COVID babies, right? And they're a product of COVID, so to speak. When the birth rate goes down, are these buildings, if we build new ones, easily transferable to something else that would be able to be utilized differently?
I don't think it would be difficult to make sure there's some flexibility there. I don't know that we would provide all the space that you would in a traditional elementary if we were building a pre-K, but we could build it in such a way that would be easy to add a dedicated cafeteria down the road if we needed to, to adapt that for a different use, where it would be not a great, you know, not a huge amount to adapt it for a different purpose, that you know, you could, you could make that adjustment, I think. Something else I wanted to mention that Sandy brought up, talking to her, is one of the things you deal with when you're at a distributed model is if you have a good pre-K teacher, it's very hard for the principal to resist the temptation to move them to a testing grade and move another teacher that may not be performing as well to pre-K where they're not tested. And it's really incumbent on us, I think, to try and make sure we get the best possible pre-K teachers. And that is easier to do if they're not at risk of being poached within their own campus for a different grade.
Ken, to your point, on the slide that has the historical enrollment, we also talked about when Kelly pre-K, which was 2012, one day, it's right at the beginning of this. On this chart, our enrollment for pre-K was also declining, and there was capacity at the schools and space at the schools at that time. And so we were filling a different gap by filling our schools and then offering that to our teachers. But then after the state initiated full-day pre-K, the trajectory has shifted. And we didn't know that trajectory was going to happen when they made that decision, that there was going to be full-day pre-K at the state.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, birth rates coming down, and like I said, I think these are a lot of COVID babies because it's baby four, started 2020. So just, I'm just trying to think if in the future, if we're going to spend this kind of money, is it something that those buildings can be really utilized if the birth rate goes down and we don't have the enrollment?
Can you go back to the pre-K evaluation slide? The one that had all of the locations in the presentations? I think what I want to, I want to build off of what Sarah said, that, I mean, what we are talking about tonight is taking what was initially intended in the bond, what was sold to the taxpayers, and we're making a change. I fully agree that pre-K is a necessary and needed thing, and it establishes the baseline for these kiddos for the rest of their trajectory of school. I just want to caution us as a board in changing scope, that we're really being thoughtful about it, because, I mean, this is a big change, obviously. I think my only hesitation is that northern side is not at capacity. And I have to believe that there's a reason why those parents aren't sending their kids to our pre-Ks, and probably even with a new shiny center are interested. And I would, I just think we need to really think that through carefully, like is that the right move or not? West, I have no concerns because they are already like Cook Line and Sinkers, they have bought it, they are in, they will go to the shiny center and they'll probably be super excited. But is that what's going to sell these families that already aren't interested? Because do they want private? Do they want the Spanish Schoolhouse? Do they want, like, there's probably so many things that a public school pre-K is not even a consideration for them. And now we've built this giant shiny center and our numbers still look less than fifty percent. But that would make me sad because that's a choice to change bond funds and we still didn't accomplish a purpose. And I don't know how you address that, but I would, I would just caution that we make sure that this is going to be appealing to our northern families.
Can I ask, is there a lot of charter schools in that area? Do you know the answer to that?
I have not mapped where the charter schools are. I have recently come across in data that looking at charter schools in our district, when they leave us and they go to a charter school, the ratings for those schools are the same. They're not going to a higher rated school. They're just going to a charter school.
Does charter offer pre-K?
They're going to, but they're not yet.
Some do, some don't.
Harmony is right there next to Ray.
Were you guys able to pull the numbers? I know one of the bond oversight committee members had asked, like, yes, they're using ninety percent of the eligible students, but is that a, like, there's only five eligible students over there? Or there's a hundred and fifty eligible students over there? So is the, the students that are and aren't using it, like, how many kids is that? Does that make sense?
I, if we, we haven't been able to pull that. We haven't pulled it yet.
Okay. Because I think that, that also tells a story because if the ninety percent capacity is in an area where those students are not qualifying for pre-K anyways, and that quantity is low, I think that it could be deceiving, depending on the quantity of kids it is.
Versus the north could be thousands of kids.
Right.
Because of course your percentage is going to look very different.
Yes.
So I want to go back to Prosper. Did they, they don't have a cafeteria, did they build a kitchen?
They have a kitchen.
Okay.
And then they have these, kind of like at the hospitals, these, more like fridge carts, like some kind of cart, and then they bring the food to each pod. And then they, district, the kids have little cafeterias, it looks like small cafeteria tables, but they're round and they, they use them for two reasons. They use it for art and playtime or whatever they're working on for, like hand, some kind of fine motor skills. And then they also use them for cafeteria use.
So it sounds like they were thoughtful cost per square footage of use of the building.
Yeah, yeah, they didn't build square footage that they didn't need for that purpose.
Right.
And they do, that was new to me too, when I took that tour, was thinking about the children serving each other. Because in those models, from what I've seen, the children serve each other, they don't go through a line. The kids get up, serve each other. In some, some models that I've heard presented, you know, they're required to take something of everything. They can't just choose the one thing that they want. They don't necessarily have to eat it, but they have to take it and put it on their plate. And then you get this interaction of a kid, one kid telling another kid, no, you need to take something. And they go back, you know, it's, it's very, it's.
Problem solving, it's a lot of problem solving as a four-year-old.
It's just, you know, it's the socialization piece. They learn how to work with each other, learn how to operate in that setting. And it's so much easier when they get into kindergarten.
And they were not hitting each other. They were very respectful of amongst our peers, and a lot of them had lunches. But it was very cool to see that, to have four-year-olds, in my opinion, to be collaborative. And yes, they're loud and they're in their pods, but they were just, I don't know, they were like little people.
Really? They'd pop in? Like, I'm curious now about the, oh, I don't know.
They have a kitchen.
That they're prepared?
They put it in a cart.
Or like?
Kind of like the hospitals.
Kind of like the hospital.
The hospital brings your food to your room?
So the kitchen is making the meals? They just don't have a cafeteria for sitting in, but they have a kitchen that's fully functional? Okay, right, I thought maybe they're bringing the meals somewhere else. Okay.
I'm not sure the kitchen was on site.
I don't, I don't know that.
We did see, we did see the floor plan, it's there. We did tour it. Yeah.
So is there any surveying of families? And what they, like, if we've got this, less than fifty percent of these kids are using it, like, what other data are we using to identify what they're wanting that we don't have? Like, for example, are they wanting a dual-language pre-K? Or are they wanting, like, what, what is it that would attract them to us if we're going to consider rebranding and rethinking our spaces?
A really great question because, like, Spanish Schoolhouse has Spanish learning, and a lot of people's want, people want to send their kids there. Or Montessori school because it's not, it's curriculum-based, but it's also very hands-on. That's, I feel like that's a very valid question.
To your question on the reasons in, in survey, and this is only an assumption, that I believe that northern section of our district, district probably has more access to private pre-Ks of, you know, facilities there. I think it would be interesting to see, you know, the private pre-Ks because that is who our center would be competing with for these families and these kids is. And I, I personally think that's a whole different competition between public and charter schools. I mean, it's a whole different level because it's financially based on some of our kids that we pay for it to. And I think that, that could be.
No, I agree. Like, I think there's something to that.
Private two-K facilities up there into the Plano areas.
A lot. There's a lot. I drove all the way over there to go take my daughter. So yes, there is a lot, a lot of options over there.
I went west for pre-K.
I went to Plano area.
I was sometime.
Other questions?
So Mr. Black, are you going to let us know, like, go and see a bunch of money? What, what money from the bond would cost us to do just the renovations that were stated in the original bond?
I don't know.
How much it's going to cost us to do stage one and stage two of your hybrid planning? The difference in cost?
The amount that was set aside in bond planning was between thirteen and fourteen million dollars, I think, just for the renovations at restricted locations. So, to do a new center, of course, is the equivalent of a new campus. So, you need all part, that's on elementary level, that's twenty, thirty, forty, um, in terms of cost of the new.
And that's where my concern is, the thirteen, twenty, thirty, then what, what are we putting at risk? What else are we putting at risk in the bond?
And that, that, again, like I've mentioned, it comes back to how we address the capacity situation.
Moving parts.
But to that point, that explains, like, hybrid one, if you're going to renovate a larger campus, how much is that going to cost?
Well, the thought was, the renovation state, the renovation money stays the renovation money. We might distribute it a little bit differently, maybe do four larger campuses instead of all of these smaller campuses. You know, try and make a little more strategic investment. But the renovation money stays the renovation money.
Okay, that was when you're looking at hybrid one?
Yeah, so when we look at, when we talk about hybrid one, in that case, we're talking about spending that renovation money for renovation and potentially taking a different approach to maybe looking at a pre-K center.
I think we talked about this last time, but have you had an opportunity to go check out the Garland Center to see what rates it looks like fluctuation, what it's looked like over the last ten years?
The Garland Center?
Yeah, like the pre-K center.
We have two of them.
I have not seen the Garland Center.
Probably get beat and wrong.
Just out of curiosity, yes, to see what it looks like, they've capped out.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments? Next steps?
Next steps will be what we're, for the June meeting, we expect to get the facilities master planned for y'all to consider from over. They'll have the capacity utilization study and we'll have the head specs. And that's anticipated for the June meeting.
Other questions or comments? All right. All right, so we'll move on to budget workshop. We need a break. Thirty-five minute break, and keep going. Nobody says a break, so there we go. Mr. Mayor?
We left this more open-ended, so I know there's probably more questions, um, as we did with the thing. So just kind of, any kind of ask question, just kind of get an ask question. So, um, we had our CFO call with a bunch of CFOs this week. So I'll give you a brief legislative update of what's going on. I also do, but they have, Carl and I, the issues of process. TRS has made an update on their, um, benefits that I'll talk to this evening. We'll do some conversation scenarios for y'all to consider, to give us some direction, so we can start building the budget and doing what we want to do. And, um, we'll kind of touch on the cabinet projects that we talked about. So, just a quick legislative update. The Bactris was a big part of the talk this year in the legislative session. On the call this week, they're trying to define it a little bit more. They think it might help schools a little bit, as what they're, they're trying to project to, to public schools. Um, there was talk of who's gonna get the money, who's gonna, how it's gonna be distributed, who's gonna want it. The controllers office at this point is going to be in charge of the money, and they will pay it directly to the private schools, at this point, will not go to the parents. They're trying to find a little bit more clear how it's gonna work. You have to be enrolled, uh, in a public school currently, and have to be at least ninety percent of the criteria to be qualified for the voucher program. Another good question, that's the first-time day, first-time pre-day qualified for the private school funding. And two-thirds of the spots of all applicants for a campus, um, would have to prove that if they stayed in public school, they would be at a C, D, or F campus. So, they're kind of geared to make it look like a little more enticing to districts like, hey, we're not gonna take your kids. Obviously, you're in private school, you do not qualify for the voucher program if you're already in private school. So it's starting, our kids, but it's saying there's a lot of situations to live. But these kids have their choice of where they wanna go with the parents as well. They did define a little bit, they will have hold some districts harmless. It won't really apply to us unless they change their, their figuring out, they're doing how they're, they're staying on now. If you have twenty thousand students or less, then you would be a harmless if you lose kids to, to the voucher program. But they, they're still talking if they might change it in the future. Uh, the good thing here is, uh, CNO twelve, as you know, passed, um, that was kind of the, the relief for sixty-five and older and handicap people that were hit by the home state exemption when it went to a hundred thousand. They were still paying a higher tax, so this kind of took all that away. And that's why we, we had such a dip in our, um, revenue this year for the harmless. So, they did, um, decide to change the methodology. Where it was supposed to be golf at all, but it really wasn't, it was really bad. So, they think at this point, we might release another three hundred million dollars to, to account for the whole harmless that would be distributed to districts, um, that were affected by the, the increase to a thousand dollars.
Really, but does, does that help us at all if we were already doing, um,
Yes, it, yeah, yeah, it helps us a bit, because, um, we won't get more money, but they'll reduce our tax payment anymore. So they're supposed to come out with their actual, um, math and methodology, and they're gonna distribute it back. Whether they think it's gonna be in the ballpark of three hundred million dollars. Um, so it's not actually the volume we get, but it's less off than what the state is thinking here. So if they think in June, they'll start having some, some definite, um, things for us to help us, because it'll be before end of August or later as well. Okay, so the budget update. So, I think last month when we talked, Carl and I were meeting at every department in campus, and we've completed all those meetings, we've met with everybody one-on-one, we've met with some two or three times. Just to make sure we had every ask, um, so we've got that complete. And Carla's been working pretty hard, going through some stuff to get it done. So, but she has all of the administrative requests from every department in campus told. And we'll have that for the June meeting, when we present the preliminary budget for year twenty-five. Attendance, as you heard, in the board meetings, it's continued to trend up, which is good for us, everything that we're doing, seems to be working. We're at over ninety-four percent skill, um, as of this morning. And, um, that helps us when we're starting our revenue projections. But we told the campuses, because there was talk, like, hey, we, you know, we ran out, Creteview High School every weekend, listen to that. So we, we told the campuses that our job in the business office is we try to account for every single dollar we think we're gonna get. So, we're accounting for all of the, you know, football team tickets, all the gate fees, all the rental fees that we, every piece of interest that we can allocate. We try to account for all of that, and that's how we deliver our budgets. So when we see, you know, our ADA trending up, that helps us, um, project more revenue dollars for the district, for TOSO. You know, declining enrollment, our ADA's going up, so it's a positive thing for us. Um, the state just released, uh, this week, or the, I'm sorry, the grade losses, the preliminary, they call preliminary certified. It's kind of a weird term, but they released their, their, um, property values. And we are to increase at this point three point five percent over last year. Doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it's almost one point two billion dollars in property tax value that we're raising now. So, even though we, home state exemption's not two hundred thousand, we're still going up. And TRS also released their rates for, um, benefits that I'll talk to here as well.
Need like a drum roll for that?
Yeah, I can drum off for sure. So, again, y'all, as a board, you approved your such funds, the general fund, it's a fun in our debt service fund. And just so you know, like, speaking of debt, of the general fund, our total tax rate, you can see, is the fourth lowest by all the surrounding districts in our area. So, y'all as a board have done really good, and worked with the district to make sure that our total tax rate stays lower than those districts. And that was the, the rule, it's like I said, it's on the INS side. The state compresses the MNO side, so we are, we're forced to change it. But, you know, we, we even want to solve the bond, the biggest priority was to leave our tax rate at twenty cents, which we were able to get. So, I'll show you, here are outstanding debt, including the latest, um, bond subject, had bond. Bond, like I said, you remember, it was in the past for seven hundred and sixteen million dollars. We rebelled, again, with y'all's approval, we sold the first one in millions of force at the first, which allowed us to utilize our credit rating and our, and our PSF rating to make sure that we got the lowest rate, you can see. I think I told you this before, that bottom left, right above the blue line, the first column, you can see it's three hundred and eighty-five million dollars, which is actually four hundred, because we sold four hundred, but we were able to sell our bonds at a premium. So the actual debt we incurred was three hundred and eighty-five million. It's, it's, I'm trying to simplify it. It's a little more complex than that, but we only owe three hundred and eighty-five million of the four hundred million that, that was deposited in our bank accounts. So, again, we were strategic on how we did it. Um, this is our bond repayment schedule so far. And you can see the first couple of years, well, we anticipate, um, higher payments. We set it up that way, this way, when we sell the next three hundred and sixteen million. Um, in four years, you can see we're down, in the first couple of years, you can see it's a little over sixteen, four million. And then it drops to about forty-eight million, and then when it flattens out, it's right in the thirty-two million dollar range. So, our capacity at this point with our property values, uh, at twenty cents, loses over there around seventy million dollars. So we're well equipped to stay at the twenty cents. And it, like I said, was strategic, and it's, and it worked out perfect, because the rates have changed, and we were able to knock some stuff in prior. So, this is the same, uh, slide as I was, it's the exact same, but what we did is kind of played with it a little bit and showed you the series. So the gold one on top is a twenty-three series, and you can see how we try to pay a lot in the beginning, and then take it down to the bottom. Any questions on the deck side?
Should I have a question?
So, I think the reason we're all here tonight, what Carla and I need from you guys is to greenlight. So, um, salaries, obviously, the top priority in the district. We talked last week, or, yeah, last month, that the, the starting rate for teachers for year zero, teacher's sixty thousand dollars. And y'all approved that at last year's, um, but with adoption, with, with the advice from the CASB salary study group. So, that being said, this is the TRS rates. Um, I know there's a lot of numbers up there. The very first column is the new rate of twenty-four, five, so it's gonna cost, if you go all the way to the right, the third from the end, I tried to go over it so you can see, but you can see that the TR rates are going up for employees. So, it's going to train from fifty-one dollars more a month to a hundred and ninety-five dollars in one month. So, we were looking through that, and, you know, over the year, fifty-one dollars is a little over six hundred dollars for a year that, that employees benefits when they're paying. If they have the higher plan, the max plan, it's going up over twenty-three hundred dollars a year. So with that kind of in mind, um, is there any question? You can see our contribution in the second column's three hundred and fifty, and it's maintained, and it's still one of the higher ones in our area that was approved several years ago before. So, even though our rate stays the same, the employees themselves are paying more for their, as TRS raises their rates.
So are we considering any adjustment to our contribution?
Uh, we certainly can, I mean, that'd be a, a priority for, I mean, that'd be some discussion for the board. So I think we can present what it would be and what the cost that it would be to the district. But again, it's-
Let me jump in here, and the challenge there is, because you look at it typically, you go with the lowest amount. So it would be fifty-one dollars, and it really doesn't offset as much as someone would get a three percent, two percent rate. Because you can't go more than the lowest one, because you're setting a set amount, like, it's three fifty now. You have to add fifty-one to it. Couldn't go any higher than fifty-one.
And, um, by that, what, do you remember what year we raised it, and like, how often do we look at that option?
We, we checked it last year, I think we were still, it was only one district that paid more than us. I think they were three, nine, three, but a lot of people were three hundred and two fifty. So we're still very generous, I believe. We were, we did check it, um, the priority has always been for the employees. An employee has the fifty-one dollar plan, yeah, it's gonna go up six hundred plus dollars a year. It's not that, that compared to much, if they choose to get a bigger plan, but the least deductible one of those county numbers, it basically goes up twenty-three hundred dollars per year. Okay, so, that being said, if you do a one percent raise, it's roughly a two million dollar increase to the budget. And a one percent raise, because we average sixty thousand dollar, um, starting teacher, is a little over six hundred dollars. So, if it's a one percent raise, then it's, that'll cover what their, um, TRS increases is gonna be, if they have the lowest plan, so. We're kind of leaning towards recommending the four point two million dollars to y'all, because that's, um, that's around a twelve hundred dollar raise, so it's a little more for starting teachers. And basically, the raises that we're doing are based off of midpoint, and that's, um, the CASB salary recommendation. I think we set it at three percent midpoint rate, to keep everyone in line, starting our peers as well. And then, because we did have asked you, there was a three percent raise, um, based on the CASB salaries, that'll roughly be about six point two million dollars increase to the specific. But roughly, it's basically hundred dollars, thirty percent, probably, yeah, nineteen ninety-four. So it's roughly a two thousand dollar raise, off the midpoint.
So was it two percent?
Two percent, it was four point two, it's about, uh, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. So that would double what the increase is for TRS. So some positive news, you'll hear that. The, this is not the positive, but it's coming. These are the hard increases that, that we can't avoid as a district this year. Um, our liability insurance, and we are exploring, we met yesterday with our risk management, um, officer. And, um, you know, there's thoughts of maybe sub-insuring, um, divided policies out. It's going up thirty percent a year, and that's, you know, I mean, Houston, and they have all their damages, it's affecting this district. So we're looking at, um, some providers that maybe will ensure based on demographics where we are in, in states that are being, instead of blanking the state. Like normally now, most districts will cover what Houston has to do, so they use one of those. Another hard cost, obviously, is, um, electricity has gone through the roof. We anticipate another one point six million dollar utility costs.
Power, juice, with the help?
Not helping. Athletics.
Yeah.
Athletics, we put as a, as a hard cost, it was, it was technically an ask from a major department, but a lot of it was, um, officiating's gone up so much, um, police president has gone up so much, they're doubling their rates to us. And we're, you know, we have to have officials, we have to have, uh, officers at, at our games, um, transportation costs, group costs have gone up. One of the major things they're doing is they're adding- Yeah, so they're adding this to the course.
Can you say that again?
Instead of starting, um, baseball, softball, and wrestling in high school, they wanna start at the middle schools. So, they're asking for an increase for the budget to be able to set these programs up. Obviously, uniforms and everything comes into play, equipment, all those things. So, it, it's, it seems like a big cost, but it's actually because they're, they're increasing the program, and what they're doing, and the, the hard cost of the officials, and the, and the police, and all that stuff that, that's coming out of the athletics budget, with the same budget they've had for many, many years.
And everything, except basic law.
So, um, another, as you know, that, even though they had to cut, um, our Tino funds, which is our textbook funds, they, they kept rolling out, um, adoptions for new, for new textbooks. So, a lot of it was covered with, a lot of it was covered with ESSER, but now the district's having to cut those costs, and all those things run away. So there's about a nine hundred thousand dollar increase for curriculum and instruction as well. And of course, technology, y'all been briefed and close such a lot about what the technology major increases are through cybersecurity, things like that. So there's hard costs that we have to absorb to go.
And some of that was covered by, uh, on that, we had said aside, allocated in that sense, in that part. That is, that's no longer the art, or so we can do that anymore. And so, some of this was, is, is cost that were, um, that were charged to that account, that we'll have to pick up from the table. Which was general funds before, like, we moved it in, now it's, but that's gone now.
So like I said, that, these are the hard costs, and like, since things like that news, but we, we've been working really hard with our department of human resources to kind of, because we, we all know, the only way you can start to currate your budget is through, through attrition, through payroll, through staffing. So, we've looked at staffing really closely, we've worked with human resources really closely, and, um, we'll have it next month, but just to kind of be a preview. So, I know we, we adopted, adopted as a board nine point seven million dollar deficit this year. It looks like we're not going anywhere close to that. We're hoping we'll have a close to a balanced budget by the end of the year, so that's really good news. And even though all these costs are coming up with our reductions in staff, and how we're positioning things, and how we think, you know, even ADA every dollar we're trying to account for, we look like, without any salary increases, the, the deficit budget next year may be somewhere between three and four million. So, it's way better, we were thinking twelve, fifteen million with raises, but without raises, it's around three or four. So, if you add, you know, say the two percent raise, it can go from three to seven. So that's still less than the budget we adopted this year. And as you know, the, when we adopted that budget, it's, not that we're in a deficit, it's that we make assumptions in this office, that every budget we give out to everybody, they're gonna spend one hundred percent of it, which obviously never happens. So we have to account for those positions, so like, this year we adopted nine point seven, we don't, we're not gonna be anywhere near nine point seven. We think we'll be pretty close to a balanced budget by the end of the year. So where the curve off seven, nine point seven million dollars was allocated to the campuses. And this year, we're looking at somewhere between three and four million, and if we add, you know, one percent, two percent, or three percent raise, we're still well under that nine point seven million dollars, which is way easier to manage and get to a balanced budget by the end of the year. So, we'll bring that to you in the June meeting, and like I said, we're, we're excited that when the dust settles, if we swim it ever, it'll be knowing these, these costs are going to be significant. So, again, the deficit is, is a deficit, and, you know, no smoke in mirrors, but I want to bring this slide back to you, like I said, we have a hundred and forty-four million dollars basically in our fund balance. Again, the target for TEAs, two months of operating expenses, around forty-seven million. Three months is, is the goal we set for ourselves, and currently we have over six months of operating expense. Actually, on a personal level, we were on our, our finance call this week, and I was talking to this mother's CFO, and I'm like, what's y'all's fund balance? Of course, a hundred and forty-four million, and nobody had a fund balance, maybe for districts our size. It was, some at third, some at twenties, some at forty. We're extremely healthy, and we feel like we're in a good position, even if we do have to adopt a slight deficit budget. Uh, y'all know, the next legislative session comes in January of twenty-five, so we think with the voucher progress and everything, they will raise the basic allotment this year. So, I mean, everything's trending like, it's gonna help us this year. This is the bar graph of the fund balance, you can see that two months of operating expense on that gold line on the bottom. And you see how extremely healthy we are as a district, and how, um, soft we are as well. Like, this is, the hundred and forty-four million is actually cash in the bank. That's ours, that nobody can take away, nobody can touch. So, like I said, for the deficit budget, we talked about possible uses of fund balance. Obviously, salary was the one if we wanna give raises. And like I said, just briefly about the deficit, maybe with the new deficit, we just have to make the assumption the same, that everybody's gonna spend what we can. Mark Hill talked last month about buses. Buses, like the district fleet, cannot be used with bond funds. It was something that the board drew in to make sure that there was no, um, vehicles, no buses that were part of bonds. So, um, Mark has been, uh, said a presentation, and we feel, um, ten buses might be safe for us, um, to, to get us back on track, and then we can have it in the replacement cycle moving forward. This way it won't hit, uh, fund balance moving forward. Uh, another part is the, the district fleet. We figure, um, between those two, it's about two million dollars, which is not very much to ask, to give us, um, some much-needed white fleet vehicles and some other buses. And obviously, the, the salaries are part of that, um, if we do adopt a deficit budget. Um, like I said, the intent, we still feel we can absorb a lot of these costs, even though we adopt the deficit. We feel like we can maybe absorb these with, you know, it could be an increase to the basic allotment. It could be, you know, higher ADA, to be more fixed, and so. These are stuff that, we're conservative still when we do our numbers, but, um, it's for reasons like this, and we can start absorbing stuff as tough as it's really here. These are stuff that, we're conservative still when we do our numbers, but it's for reasons like this, so we can start absorbing stuff as tough as we can. So athletic upgrades is another possible use. For fund balance, there's a lot of, you know, restaurants in such a status, tennis courts are in pretty bad shape. The turf, I believe it's at long, elementary is almost unusable, the turf and the tracks. So these are things that we need to consider, and we all need to consider for what we want to do. Like I said, bond funds can be used, but I know it's not the intent of the 18 bond, but there's some excess bond funds, so if that's something y'all want to consider, that's possible.
What's your, what do you think of that cost?
And that's why I want to ask, if you think it's worth, we can start bidding out some stuff, and give y'all some rough numbers of what it may be to now create a couple terms, like it's the tennis courts, like that, the buses, and the district markets are going to work pretty hard. So we know it's going to be up to $2 million range. Even the salary, you can see 2, 4, 6 million, which is where the salary increases. And like I said, the athletic upgrades, that's a little more difficult to do, so if you want to start, if you all want us to, we can start giving some advice on it, and work with Chris and Gordon, and to get some, what do we take to get these fields and trunks up to standard?
The tennis court at Creekview needs a full replacement. And the tracks at Creekview Turner Smith, they're probably in need of a resurfacing. And the restroom specifically, there's, we had a Title IX audit out at the Kelly site a few months back. It's just that Kelly site's not compliant, here's the Turner site for the softball and the baseball field.
Yeah, and like I said, the fund balance is, when you do want to use it, you want to use it for one-time expenditures. Like I said, we're putting parameters in place to get the buses on, replace the schedule, the way it's built in the budget every year. Same thing with the white fleet, the district, sorry, obviously salaries, and, you know, the athletic upgrades, we start to put it in the regular budget as well. So these are one-time expenditures, they won't be asking every year for deficits on the fund balance. It's just this year or next year, depending on the circumstances.
So it's $2 million for transportation buses, and then $2 million for district fleet?
No, about 1.5 for the buses, and about $500,000 for.
Together, it's $2 million, okay.
So if I have, I think I have, we have $144 million in the fund balance. Potential $3 million deficit from '23, '24.
No, from, that's '24, '25.
'23, '24, what's that?
'23, '24, it's got to be close. We might have a little for fund balance in the end, we might over a little bit, but it's going to be very close. Probably $2, $2.
24, 25, three or four, salaries, 2, 4, 6 million. Buses, 2 million, and athletics. You put all that, and we're, I'm just like, I look at numbers. If we were to do all of it, we would still have like five months in our fund balance.
Yes, and we'd still probably adopt a lesser of the deficit budget than we adopted this year. And like I said, with intent to absorb this during the year, unless we start cutting costs and stuff, it was less than we think it is, so, I mean, that's the intent. And if we're already on the 9.7, with all these additions, all the increasing costs, then, yeah, it's, like I said, if you touch fund balance, we wouldn't touch it for all 8 million or 7 million or 2 million. We'll touch whatever, we don't cover.
So what's the negative of both of those? Is that kind of less of it against that part?
Yeah, I think that's the only negatives, taking out of your savings account, but like the other stuff that your field needs to be addressed. You know, we asked everybody, we met with everybody one-on-one, Mark included, we asked, what do you want? And what we had last year, you can add, and you can be wanting, and everything. So Mark had asked for $10 million, I think he had one point, he wanted to, you know, he wanted to address everybody. Athletics, he makes operations, he warehouse, and he really did a hard, good job of asking everybody what they wanted, like what he wanted. So we had to narrow it down, and narrow it down, and narrow it down, so now we're on $2 million, $10 million. So he's narrowed it down, I think, as much as we can. He thinks 10 buses are what we need to kind of get the older, we have some O5 buses that we're still driving around. So there's some real needs that we felt, so we, you know, not fought them, but we talked back and forth, and back and forth, and private, Chris and we agreed on the numbers, we filled. About 1.5 million for 10 buses, because they're about 150 each, and then about $500,000 till we could start prioritizing which district fleet vehicles need to be replaced. But I guess we're going to be box trucks, or pickup trucks, or landowners, so those, we're going to be like, prioritize.
So I feel like we've already asked you this question, but we've got a certain amount of money in the bank for the savings, like you say. Do we get, is there something negative that happened, that we have too much? Should we be spending it?
No, but like, we've talked last night, that sometimes a legislature just thrown around for, before you let me sell bonds, they want you to use your fund balance. But we heard talk, and we've got more than a year of fund balance, and to spend it down to the end of the year. And that's why we said, we designated some of our fund balance for different things this way, because all the talks been that if you have, you know, one year of unassigned fund balance plus, then you have to spend it down to six months or something like that. We assign, so we have a balance, unassigned fund balance, we're right at 100. So that puts us at on the three to four month range, which is the sweet spot. So if it can finish the road, then we're going to sign them up.
Just a reminder, once again.
It's a reminder, if you have any clue, Mark, it's not anything. So, like I said, these are the capital improvements. We did talk about possible uses of the 18 bond, technology. I think we talked about it last time, that when the connectivity grant came out, it was great. We've got to replace a lot of old devices, a lot of cabling, a lot of hard drives and things like that. But what it did is it took it really off the replacement schedule, but totally added wax. So that can be a possible use for some of the bond funds, to get some of the technology and structure up to date. Fine Arts, again, this would be, we met with Mark, the Fine Arts director, and we asked him, what do you need to get your instruments up to date? And he needs a lot of the big two bills, the norm and stuff like that, that the district normally pays for. He had around $98,000, and we worked, Carl and I worked with him a moment ago, and that if he can get started with this little chunk of $98,000, then we can put him on a replacement schedule in his budget as well. So he's moved things around, he says, if I can get this, then I'm home free, we can work it in the budget, whether it's uniforms or anything like that. He has, he had a really solid plan, telling us what he can do, and how he can stay within the budget he's given every year, and still start these replacements. So he thinks this would just kind of get him going, and move in the right direction, replace some 412s and things like that, but he won't replace. And it's just under $100,000.
What about the technology upgrades?
Technology is like, oh, their wish list was $17 million or something.
But I gotta, I mean, you're talking technology updates, like our, like hardware, like devices?
Some are devices that were, we've talked with bond council, and we can use devices if we want. The 2018 bond, you can see in that other slide, there was barely any left. A lot of times, you don't want to buy, like I said, buses or vehicles or devices, because.
I'm completely against that.
They have a 30-year note, but a lot of our bonds are callable, which means we can refi them and pay them off later, so. And that was our plan to do, because you can see, we'll be in the $35 million range when we have 70-plus million.
I just don't want to be paying on a laptop that has a one-year lifespan. I mean, that is, that is a complete waste of taxpayer, the use of.
Not the actual student laptops, this is like for the major infrastructure stuff.
Okay, let's clarify that.
Yeah, no, not student laptops.
But any kind of thing that has a consumable, we should not be using bond funds.
This is for the infrastructure stuff, that if we were able to do it with some bond funds, then it releases budgets, so we'd be able to buy the laptops that are so far behind on.
But to that point, is like, are instruments a longevity purchase? Like, how long does it take those to wear off? That doesn't feel like a 30-year note either.
Well, he's. Longer than a laptop, yeah, no, he's assets that are 20 and 30 years old. Like I said, it's around $90,000 for the instruments that he was thinking of, so it's not a huge purchase. And something we can absorb in the budget as well, just, it's an option for you to use bond funds. I know we have some allocated, there's going to be, you know, 15, 16 million dollars left of bond, the stuff y'all approved last time, it'll be funny.
Okay, now I'm going to go back and ask the same question I feel like we're asking every meeting. Have we completed the list that was the 2018 bond projects that didn't get done in the first round? Because I don't even want to be talking about anything else unless we've cleared that list, and I don't know that we've cleared that list.
The biggest portion of the list that remains is a $600,000 bid that we got back to finish up the home side of standards, primarily with the restroom upgrades, the locker room upgrades, the north end de-cap for the lighting is. We talked in one meeting about extending the bleachers, but the capacity and the attendance don't merit expanding that visitor side. And that was the, that was really as far as what was remaining of the unfinished bond spends.
So I ask two questions then, is the $600,000 for that, these things are, this is still money left over after the 600 he's talking about? And then, after that project, there is nothing left on that list?
Far and away.
I mean, what is far and away? Like, there's still 20 more projects, or?
No, I mean, yeah, I think.
Okay, I mean, I think the whole board needs the list, I'm not going to be here, but, like, please don't consider stuff that wasn't even on the list to begin with until we know we've at least checked that entire list off. And if there's money left over, and we can do other stuff, then great. But that would be really a sad use of taxpayer trust and dollars to have just jumped ship and moved on to other things. I think these are great things that probably needed, but how to finish the list?
Well, doesn't the last bond extra funds go towards a new building?
Good.
Good, that's how good was funded?
I mean, that's another thought, we're talking about, we need a pre-K center.
Caroline has a question.
Yes, Caroline?
Let me get her.
Caroline, are you there? Caroline, are you there? Caroline?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear you?
Okay, wonderful. Regarding that 2015 bond, in technology, I was wanting to ask about the awesome system at Creekview. And I understand there's still a control panel and such that needs to be done, so they can use it at full capacity. Can you speak on that?
Did she say the PA system, the control panel on the PA system?
No, a control panel on the auditorium that's needed to complete the ability to use the new system at full capacity. And that was new speakers, and lighting, and what have you, that was installed at Creekview.
So I think she talked about the auditorium, something related to the PA system and the auditorium at Creekview.
Control panel.
Was that, was that, that was at the last board meeting, right?
Yeah, is that, that was included in the PA system?
Yes.
So Caroline, that was included in what we just approved last month?
Okay, all right, I just, since you're talking about it, I thought I would have. I think if I could go back just a moment to Larry, when we were talking about the budget, you know, one of my things that I want to talk about is the impact on all of our campuses. You know, Larry, I know there's a rise in cost of things versus cutting costs, and I know we're giving them what they need, but how is that impacting the overall, I guess, demand of extras that they need to?
The, when we met with every campus one-on-one, we let them ask for every single thing they wanted. We showed them historically what they spent to date, what they spent the prior year, so they could see historically what they've done every year, and what they have left over. No, not people in one campus of the 38 actually remember a budget that had some special circumstance where we had to transfer more in there. Nobody had ever spent their budget, and we restored everything they asked for this year, we didn't cut any budgets at all. And that's in the presentation here.
Thank you, Larry.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to ask a general, like, athletics question for more information for the board. If we're considering different things at campuses, athletics specifically, can the board get a list of what has been done where? Because, like, you mentioned Long, and like, it made me think, I don't think Long's been touched.
It's really Polk, Polk was the one specifically.
But has Long been touched? Like, it made me think, I don't know that they have a new field or a new, and if, like, I know for sure Givian Field has gotten one period, obviously, it's beautiful. I think it'd be really helpful for us to see a list of who all has new what, and who does not have new what, before we start making further decisions. I mean, yeah, but like, I would hate to.
Condition, but it's condition analysis.
Because I would hate to find out that we did all these things, and we never, and I'm not saying we did this, because I don't know for sure, but like, Long. I mean, all of a sudden, I'm like, Long, did we do anything at Long? Like, we have to be equitable in the way we're distributing our choices and renovations, so.
What's a terrorist point, a condition analysis versus just a list of things that we want?
And I feel to your point, Sally, that is a, that's a great point, because, you know, the tennis coach at Creekview, who's been there, he's been there 21 years, and he's still using the same tennis court. And so we will get the analysis of by campus, because, you know, we have to make sure that our kids are, if we're going to increase athletics, we've got to make sure that they have the right things that will.
Well, to that point, if we're adding, well, I know our.
To the longevity of how long the fields and, you know, our tennis courts, we've got so many kids out for tennis, but yet our courts are, they can't handle.
Well, and I was at track the other day, and it's like, I was like, oh, gosh, if somebody runs here, that's a problem.
So we, we can definitely put that together. Okay, condition analysis.
All right, so the next steps, obviously, workshop, workshop number three is June 4th. We'll bring you the final budget estimates for the current year, to see where we're going to land for '23, '24. We'll present to you all our available revenues, and finalize the compensation plan, if you can give us direction. Y'all want to decide this evening, 1%, 2%, or 3%, and start building the budget and getting that, getting that good.
Okay, so recap in my brain, what I feel like we're feeling fairly confident with the deficit is going to be smaller. But with that being smaller, there are other things that we need to consider that may increase the deficit, but then the legislature will come in and do their part.
Yes, and like I said, just because we adopt deficit budget management, just even with raises, we're going to do, we can adopt smaller than the 9.7 million budget we adopted this year. And like I said, the intent is the entire time to watch the budget, watch expenditures, to make sure we trim that deficit down by the end of the year, like we're trying to this year.
Do you include, so like, is there a line that says from fund balance, and then it's a zero deficit?
We can, but how it works is you spend all year long, and like I said, we get our tax collections, obviously, in November, December, January is the main part for the year. So we have all that money in the bank, we don't actually have a deficit till we start spending the rest of that money throughout the rest of this fiscal year. So like I said, the intent is at the end of the year, if you spend more than the revenue, then we dedicate the fund balance to zero out this fiscal year. If there's money left over, like there was last year, it was 2.1, but 2.1 goes into that fund balance. So we can try, we'll be thinking, if we spend 100% of the deficit, what the fund balance would be hit for. Like I said, in the end, it's whatever's left after the policy expenses against the budget, so we can't say, oh, we took $2 million to this, because it was actually just what was left over, that we need to zero out this for the year.
Okay, thank you. And did you say your recommendation was 2%?
Yes, because the 1% would really be a wash, but PRS costs are going up, so we get ready to go in $600, something, but PRS is going up at minimum $600, something. So 2% would actually double that, so make $600, something faster.
So just in general, I do not believe that hope is a sound management strategy for financials. I really think that we need to have some idea of where '23, '24 is going to end up bottom line as in a forecast. Because if we're going to be, wherever we're going to be ending up here, and if we have to tap into fund balance, and then at the same time, or before we know what the finals are, if we're going to be having to project a task. if we're gonna be having to project a tap into fund balance, I think we need to know the magnitude. I mean, those are overlapping. I am not against using fund balance for our priorities, like the one-time expenses, like buses, or to fund our compensation, because we've all identified that as a priority. And that's why we have that financial position. However, using the fund balance year after year after year is not sustainable. I mean, we cannot do it, especially with the unknown of what the state is gonna do from that. But I, I mean, I still, I, I have no idea how we're gonna end up in twenty-three, twenty-four against our adopted budget. I, I think we need a forecast with bottom line.
Yes, and that, that'll be June fourth, you have the forecast. Like I said, we run the numbers, we just didn't bring it tonight, but like I said, we think we're gonna be really close to a balanced budget by the end of the year. Maybe a little bit lower, a little bit above, but it's not gonna be near that close. We, we run forecasts off of it at our office.
So I, to that point, if you're constantly writing forecasts, I think we need to be seeing forecasts frequently. Because even at the end of them, but when, when we look at the report, and we're like, well, we're about at this percent, which is about right. I, I understand that there are certain things that aren't gonna change, like obviously electricity's going up, it's gonna change, but there are certain things that are not flexible in the budget, and there's only a little pot that we're playing with compared to big pie. So I think to Mr. Rogic's point, more frequent forecasts would be helpful than to get to June and just now have a forecast, um, just for future reference.
And I, uh, in, in, to be realistic, forecasts done in month one, two, and three of your fiscal year are pretty much useless. I mean, your forecast is gonna be your budget, basically, because you don't know what's, there's not enough data and trends. So, I mean, I think, you know, in thinking about it, whatever we think is reasonable, but, um, just so we know, just so we know where we're gonna end up.
Other comments?
Well, if you're, if we're just doing this for fun, I would like to see what a three percent raise would do if we budgeted that in.
I think we need a comparison chart with what our surrounding districts are doing, and I know that everyone's starting to get there, just so that we can kinda gauge. Cause being so competitive, we don't wanna end up without teachers, and we may have to only buy five buses, but we need to take care of our teachers.
I'm willing to take one percent off the table.
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent, one percent off the table.
So don't even put that, I, I didn't, right, I don't wanna speak for everybody, okay?
So in June, um.
Are you all giving that one percent?
Yeah, I'm already taking two percent off, cause two percent is kinda like, uh, six hundred dollars. I mean, some people can't pay the math back. So to me, it's almost a slap to the face. I'd just rather go with three percent, which would be a normal cost of inflation increase. So that would be my, like, that to me is.
Can we model a two, two point five, three?
Absolutely.
Just so, so we can see some of those.
All right, I need that nod on that.
Yes, we do, and like I said, it's, it's changed. When we first, you know, started, like I said, we did a bunch of things in summer, but when the process started, a lot of districts were saying, we're not doing raises, we're not doing raises now. Everybody's kinda come off that. Some districts have already spoken, said, we're not doing a raise, and they're back to something important. Sometimes, like I said, it's ever-changing, things change over time, so it's good to have pause, not, not, say, we're not gonna do a raise, or we're gonna do a three percent raise. Like I said, the climate changes constantly.
So you're looking for approval of the compensation plan in June?
Well, we have a workshop in the beginning of June, and then we'll do, um, we can give you both, at the workshop and at the board, if you wanna choose one of those.
It's in the same week. It's just one, two, same month.
Yeah, it's the same week. We have Tuesday discussion, Thursday.
Well, I, I, I would agree with H R. It's hard to advertise our district if we don't even know approval.
Well, and on top of that, we, I just think we have to recognize the reality that our teachers are living in, and we, I mean, if it's a priority, it's a priority. We have to take care of the best of the.
Absolutely.
And there is designated fund balance, and about forty-one and a half million we designated, because remember we talked about the cliff for the last three or four years, and it's coming, it's coming. So let's designate this to make sure we can cover salaries and get raises in case there is a lot of which happens. So there is designated fund balance, so I can, we'll open four side cases, so set it right.
All right, do we need, so we, we talked about the?
You want three scenarios, or just want two, two and a half and three and a half?
Two, two and a half and three?
Two, two and a half, we want two.
And then what about the other questions you had for, with the buses? I think athletics, we talked about, we want a better.
Analysis.
Analysis.
Yes, the.
Buses, you're gonna, do we want to include buses in the projections?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's a, I didn't.
Buses and district fleet.
That has different, um, other operational positives as well, so.
So buses and district fleet, and then athletics, more information.
All right.
And then more information about what we mean by tech and, and the structure?
Yeah, we'll get that, um, where as well, like, it's no computer, no laptops, but then a super laptop.
So some more detail on tech and the structure, and then what do we wanna do about the instruments?
I think we just need a cost analysis and also what schools they're going to, right? I mean, is it just in general? All the schools and what they're getting?
The whole high schools will get certain instruments that they need. There's, older two was at Creekview, but the Ovos and Assoons at, at Rancher or something. So he's, he knows what his list is, and it's right, except around ninety-five, ninety-eight thousand.
So he's done his analysis, like buses have done their analysis, okay. Okay. Was I giving you the information you need?
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have any more questions or comments? All right, let's take a break. Ms. Finnevitas, do you have any more questions? Nothing. Okay, so seven thirty-six, you wanna touch, share your quote first?
Absolutely.
All right, so let's take a ten minute break. Seven thirty-six. And we are back in some discussion, and we are moving on to item, item three C, the fiscal year discussion. Back to you, Mr. Gary.
Fiscal year discussion, okay, so I know it was brought up changing the fiscal year and what are the pros and cons, and, um, I guess from a, from a business standpoint, it's, it's extremely difficult, not that it should weigh in decision, cause we'll do whatever it takes. Um, the main part the fiscal year does, the main thing it does is help campuses, um, because sometimes they don't have enough, like, when they come back, and like, if it starts in July, then they get to me by July one. But when we met with all the campuses this year, um, all of them actually say, hey, I, I put five thousand dollars away. I know when I come back in August, I'm having startup costs for September first. So they all sort of already planned, all, every single campus, I think, had their, their set aside money to make sure that they have that fund. That was one of the major things, was, hey, the campuses don't have their budget to, to get other needs flywides. A lot of it's some planning, like, you know, we have to cut off the budget first, so we can cap it again, and here's see what our expenses and earnings will be. So that was the major thing was like, hey, can, if we don't have that money to start a school in February, then all the states, except for everyone else, it's a mixed year. Um, so we found, but everybody has this plan, everyone's, dreadful, has known set aside, and we allow for it when we come back in that first of August, they can buy all the supplies they need to make sure they get it set up first.
I think one of the things too is that's confusing for them, because it doesn't matter school year. So they, they don't, they come back and they're like, okay, we're already back, this is the new school year, it should be a new budget. And so that's kinda confusing to them, um, because it doesn't start September first. It starts in August, so it's a little confusing to them. So I think for the most part, um, in July, very, it's for the benefit of the campuses.
Sorry, I was just finding that now they're planning.
Yeah, we're retarded.
Yeah, it wa, it was really awesome to go to each campus this year, um, because. Because what we found was the theory's always been, well, if I don't spend, they're going to take it away. Well, if we don't take it away, we show them that, hey, you're allocated based on your enrollment, your ADA, if you're on snapshot day. You get all your multipliers for, you know, if you have more body, more GT, whatever. So their budget is never based on what you spend, it's based on the kids you have. So and we explained clearly that, and you say you have 500 kids when you started, who would budget going 500 kids? If you drop to 400 kids, we don't reduce your budget, we leave it where it's at. If you get 600 kids, then we give you more budget. So we made it clear that we don't take your money if you don't spend it. If you base every year on your enrollment, whether it goes up or down. If you increase during the year, we give you more money. If you decrease, then you keep your savings. So we made it clear to them and then I think they understood better that, hey, you're going to take my money, we're trying to spend it. That's why they tried to spend a lot of it at the end of the year, which is why we had to cut out. But we were surprised that some of them still thought that. But we're also less than least surprised since everybody was planning for that August expense when the kids come back, huge comeback.
I think to me, one of the things that we found out when we visited with all the campuses, like Claire said earlier, there was one campus that said they needed additional funds. But all of them said, we can work with this, we can make this budget work, this is plenty of money. And we didn't reduce them, you know, yet at the campus like we did last year. They were reduced by 10% last year. But right now, you know, if everything goes well, they, they got what their enrollment was. Based on their enrollment and those different costations of students. And they were all just said that that was plenty that they could work with. So that was a good incentive.
Yeah, Leon had creeped through, when he took over for the group, when he called me and says, Joe took all my money, I don't want to start school. So we gave him this money he needed and that happened every once in a while. But every principal knows that if they run short, they just call us. Like I said, $300 million budget, we can give them 500, like 1,000 more per ID. So we make sure they have it and we can just like extra, no campus.
Let me, let me jump in here too. There's a time constraint because TA requires the board to vote by June the 10th. And it would be for the '25, '26 school year. So if the board did want to change it, you'd have to do it at June 6th or 10th.
And I'm the one that had originally requested this analysis and it was based off of comments that we had in last year or with the comments that we heard during last year's budget discussion, you know, a couple of times. Well, because this, you know, straddles the calendar school, fiscal year, school year, it's difficult, campuses have to do this, campus. I completely agree that the benefit would be to our campuses. I'd also heard some comments from the athletic side indicating that, you know, a lot of our games start in the old fiscal year budget, but the new school year, so they didn't have the money to buy meals and food, you know, for our players. So, you know, others were stepping in. Now, if there's a process to correct that and make sure that's in, you know, that they're accounted for. I mean, I don't, I don't have, it was just an interest in seeing what it was. I don't think I have a strong feeling one way or the other on this. This afternoon, very last minute, I'll acknowledge that to Brian. I had asked him to, you know, hey, can we see advantages, disadvantages, are they ongoing at one time? Because I do not disagree, painful transition. And I'm sure if Anna was talked to, she probably wanted to, you know, slap. She probably said, uh, but, you know, in reevaluating the advantages, I mean, I do like the situation of recruiting teachers based on that because we have to make decisions a lot earlier. And so recruiting teachers, you know, that would be known in contract. I mean, I see that as a huge benefit. But I, I don't think there's a disadvantage at staying as we are. I think it's just making sure the communication is clear to our campuses on what they need to do to eliminate the confusion, to your point. I mean, that's, it's weird, it's weird. And that there's a process, kind of a checklist so they know what they need to evaluate to finish out the year. So, I mean, I see advantages, there's disadvantages, so I don't have another problem.
So my prior district, we did this and it was really good for the first year. But the next year, we were right back to where we were. And that's why it's better probably to do the workaround, to be able to get there, then the money.
Okay.
I'm good.
I think it's, I really, and I do believe it's the education and the understanding of what do they really need to start. Because even when the budget opens, it's just like, oh my gosh, we need all these things, do we? And so I think I'm very thankful that you all spent so much time at the campuses because I do think we have so many new administrators that don't understand how a budget works. And it relies on a secretary that has done what, you know, here's what we've always done. And we have to get more strategic with what do we really need? And so I think that's the benefit of it.
Other comments?
I was going to say, I think sitting down with all the campuses has paid off in different ways. On so many levels, I think it's been great.
But it doesn't stop there either. I think it's an ongoing education of how budgets work and priorities. And because some of the campuses are going to need to be on a replacement cycle for furniture and for cafeteria tables and all of that. And that's where you pool your money and resources together for them. So I think we have to constantly educate.
Yeah, I think the ongoing partnership, not just in budget season, is something that they will value as a result.
We're going to have them change at the campus. I was thinking that, so like someone's going to have new administrators for this next year. I mean, I don't pop them yet, so or go back to make.
We do bring in, finance 101 course, same secretary, we'll go sit with them all at their desk and make sure they're comfortable and not in their cell.
After I've said to do that, we can make sure we visit with every single campus. And that, if things start there, we've already had, like, we've met, I went out even a couple more times to different campuses. And, you know, like, they were, they have really taken on and everything for that we came out. And they got their services to come out a couple of times, not every, but just a couple. But it's, I think it is time to just get out.
Well, thank you guys for your, if you're outside, but it's not like it's taking up. Other comments or questions? All right, thank you both very much for all your support and for spending more time with us and help us grow and learn too. Okay, we're going to move on to three D, which is the calendar discussion. So I know the slide, oh, that's like deep. So from the video, and I think it may be easier if I pull it up. The calendar subcommittee wanted to check in with board members about thoughts on some changes to the board calendar for '24, '25. So I won't go through all the slides, but it would probably be helpful to have a visual. Starting out with the discussion about presentations. So there has been some questions about when we get presentations and when they'll be provided. And so Dr. Eldridge and Brian and Dee and I had a conversation and thought that it would be helpful to all kind of get on the same page of when we would be provided presentations ahead of time and when we wouldn't. And see if this strategy is helpful for you guys or if we need to adjust something going forward. So pre-meetings, nothing's really changing. We don't have pre-meeting presentations prior to the meeting if there is a presentation. Information items, they're going to be provided in workbook when it's published. They might come via email also, but they're going to be in workbook. That way you can also see it historically if you need it again. For consent agenda, there's no presentations. And then information and our action, if there is going to be a presentation, they're going to provide it ahead of time. And by ahead of time, we mean the Friday before when the agenda is posted. You'll get any presentations in case you want to preview it and ask any questions ahead of time. Questions or concerns about that structure, does that help alleviate some concerns that were presented? In case you want to preview it and ask the questions.
Comment, it hasn't happened very often, but we had material presented to us last time, last week. And then when it was presented, it was different, it had changed. And it would be helpful if we're going to be putting stuff out in advance, it needs stable.
I totally agree. Or if it's a page that's changed, we take the page out and, I mean, we've, I've already addressed that, so thank you. But I would also say in the consent agenda, how, even though there's no presentation, I think what we're trying to provide is detailed information in there so that you're aware. And I think that came up, you know, just in board calls and, and making sure that you know that, you know, what the history was and cost and what it was actually for.
On the notes in the workbook. So I already have the needs related to presentations or information being provided in workbook on consent agenda items that we need to address. Anything else from Mel's perspective? Okay, good. I'll skip some of the slide through. So the next thing for consideration, which is a pretty significant adjustment, is the fact that over time, we've been adding more work settings. But then they also have purposes. And so do we want to consider number one, I'll go with the like the legislative roundtable and the legislative priorities? We've done a work study before on legislative priority. We haven't done a legislative roundtable where we bring in our representatives and senators. How does the board feel about adding that for the '24, '25 school year?
I think that's great.
I also printed this one off so you guys could see it all together.
Perfect, oh, great.
So you should have.
I think it's true, we do.
You do?
Yeah, I think the legislative sessions begin in January for us to have a roundtable in December. Not really giving as much information.
Do you guys remember why we talked about having it this summer?
Yes, we weren't sure exactly what, what day in December. So we considered holidays and all that, so not pushing it towards the end. But then the reason it was in December was because in November, we have newly elected officials. And so, but then in January is when the, when everything, the session starts. And so then we're kind of in a time crunch to find a good time. That's the only reason why it was proposed for December.
I think December, December is a perfect month because when the session starts, they're filing bills.
That's what I was thinking, is December, you could get something on their radar to file a bill on.
That's the only reason we chose.
We weren't 100% sure, but we threw it on the calendar for December 5th, just so it could be there. But then we also have to be flexible depending on the reps.
Seeing who we can get.
Yeah, seeing who can even come to the table.
Well, and to that point, to your point, Randy, I think in building relationships with them, when you guys, when administration reaches out, reaches out to them and they say, yeah, we'd rather have it early January, or we're going to be back in town on this date, we're all going to be in, in office this date. So propose December just because of the time crunch, but really working with them on when the food we can get. Does that sound, that helps? Because we want to base it on their availability too. But no matter what, we're either, we're not having no work study in December because December's crazy enough anyways, unless we're going to meet with our legislatures, the legislative roundtable. Okay, the second thing is continuing the three budget workshops. Is that something that we are seeing that will be important for next year based on the fact that we experienced it this year so far, we've experienced two?
I mean, I personally like it, we have a lot of, a lot to oversee and finance is a really big portion of our job.
I definitely could have three workshops, but I almost want, can we move like one to February? Just to get it started, or is it better to have it April 18th?
I think that's really. So I gave you this calendar so we could look at it. Just so you would see how the timeline kind of works out. Because we, you know, we, we, you have to look at when we get our, our values and is it feasible to do it that soon? To be an overview.
It's not asking.
Yeah.
And does it matter?
Well, I mean, it, well, one, it depends on, you know, what we still want to be educated on and continue to understand the budget. Versus, do you want numbers, more forecasting?
Well, I would look at workshop number one as really, you know, evaluating where we are, what we're doing, defining our priorities for the coming year. Not numbers, but what are our priorities, you know, for that.
So that's what I was wondering, do you want to back, push it back to February?
Enable other needs, thanks.
I just throwing it out there.
Clearly, I can't type. Okay, well. Okay, I'm just going to give up because I'm pushing the right button. So, yes, now?
Have time to absorb the information and come back and.
I just know the last one is purposeful, that the state happens before the state.
I was thinking it's super smart.
Okay, well, I'm going to leave it as, as most of the major concerns. Okay, then the other major change that we considered was moving the team of eight from the September work study to the August work study. And so that's like an addition to the work study. And Eleana and Kim, I think our main purpose for that was to make sure we're onboarding with our newest team member to build cohesion and then also allowing us to start getting into the work in September. Otherwise, we were going to be waiting a long time to be able to start working on things, which has implications for administration, for support. Any concerns about that change? Okay, so then that leaves, the, the next major change was when we have our budget meeting, the fact that we're already here and it's usually like a 20, 30 minute, we adopt the budget and we walk out, staying and doing parliamentary procedures training, following up on our prior ethics training and doing our SLID brief. So that way we're kind of all caught up. And then when we hit September, we're able to focus on other board priorities. Any concerns there? Okay, so then that leaves a major. Other addition was adding a few more work studies for flexibility. We don't currently have topics there because it was really dependent on what the board priorities are and what administration needs to share with us. And/or things that might be coming as information, as action items that we need information prior about. So you have a couple of options. One is to not put extra work studies on the calendar. And then if we need to call them, we call them, or put them on the calendar. And then if we need to make adjustments, we can. We can cancel them if we, if we don't have anything.
I would just assume we have them on there so we know them, if it's going to come out at the minute, we cancel them if we cancel them.
I just want to, well, I just also want to throw out that when you add more meetings, you also add additional funding. Because it's food and it's people and so just want you to be mindful of that as well.
I think it also comes into play in some of the discussion on the next item, on the information to action from that aspect. I know that we've come across several, you know, situations this year where we've, you know, said, we got to talk about this, we got to talk about this, we got to talk about this. And so then we have 15 items in an hour and a half. And I would prefer work studies not be rushed or, or crowded, cognizant on what the impact to, you know, everybody is. Us, our schedules, families, staff, everything. I don't want to have a work study just to have a work study because it's on the calendar. I don't think that's right either, but I'm with Ken, I think, you know, having them scheduled so that if we have a necessary topic, especially knowing what we're going into next year on some of the discussions and decisions. especially knowing what we're going into next year on some of the discussions and decisions we're gonna be making next year. I think it's one of the, uh.
Top priority.
Yeah.
Beyond top priority.
Capacity and moment.
Yeah. So, that's how I feel.
Eliana?
Brace holders better, just, we already have it scheduled, we don't have to scramble. And if we need it, great, and if we don't, then that's okay, take it off. Randy?
Just having them on the calendar doesn't exist.
True.
But.
Okay, so the one thing in making this that I don't think I saw before, but I see now, is I was thinking about the budget workshops, and there, it's like first Thursday meeting, and then it was second Thursday budget workshop. But typically, we do first and third, so we skip a week of the, with the workshops and, and meetings. That is not the way October, November, and January play out. Um, do you guys have a preference on, in general, we wanna do first and third?
But I think the problem is, is in October now, we have a full week off.
Oh, that may be why.
In November?
It was the calendar, the way, the way things count, yeah.
We did it.
We thought it grew.
Yes.
They thought of everything, had, nice try.
Nice try, right?
Okay. Okay, well then, um, but I think something that Dr. Eldridge and I can consider when we also create agendas is, if we only have one topic and we think it's only gonna take an hour and it's not time sensitive, and we look the next month, we can combine and cut one, but what we wanna go ahead and put it on the calendar. Um, any other thoughts? Okay. Um, that is item, I don't remember anymore.
B.
D, so we'll move on to P, which was information to action, um, which was that there were some concerns that have been shared, um, about, um, discussion and/or the action portion of the agenda, and feeling like we need to, um, have additional time to process before action is taken. And so with that, there were some varying options, and I don't know what happened with my, um, color in there, that's fine. Which was, um, I'll just let you have a second to remember the three solutions, I'll let you bring it to you.
These aren't the definitive three so, solutions you were.
Yes, they were.
Open to ideas.
Yes, totally open to ideas, ready to help processing, Tara helped me process some potential solutions with pros and cons to help facilitate the discussion, but if there are other ideas, we are completely open, um, to thoughts.
Do the second one, right? Holding a pre-work study on a full agenda one week prior to the regular meeting?
I mean, you can do it.
Right, but that would, that would add more to what our calendar has already proposed.
Exactly.
And ex, another.
Yes, but we can all, if we know the items in advance, like, that's the part about professional judgment here, that like, if administration's looking at the agenda and they kind of have a gut feeling that this is gonna be something that board members are gonna wanna discuss, then we can put it on the work study that we already have on the calendar now. And so technically, it's not one week prior, but we do now have a work study prior to every board meeting, with the exception of the one month. So there is the option that if we think there's something that could be a red flag for more discussion, we can do our very best to have it ready.
Well, I also like when Dr. E puts in her, you can memo, like, just so you know, here's the information on that issue, which is hugely helpful.
Right. And I think too, I think just getting, you know, I'm not a rookie anymore. But I think just knowing the sensitive topics, and I think, you know, this, I agree with Tara, this coming year with all that we're studying is gonna be sensitive, that we're gonna need to, because you hear it, but you almost need a revised version to hear it again, and you hear a different, it makes you process it, you know, and the, the, the questions we ask. So I do think that we will improve with, and have, so.
So having the work study every month would be.
Well, I think just in general, the topics we know that are gonna, we can put more information in our memo, in general.
I think, I think.
It's like an overview, and then here's the detail, you know, just so you know what's coming. Does that make sense?
I think so, I think, I think we're already improving in this area, because not only do you know things, whoever the board president is, like, also, like, we, we talk about it in our meeting, and we'll say like, hmm, this might need to move to discussion, and here's the reason why we think people might have concerns, or might wanna talk about this more. So knowing that even more now, like, the more conversations we have, the more she learns, the more I learn, or whoever's board president will learn, kind of how to support each other. And if you have, if you have something and you're, you're concerned and you don't, and we don't wanna take action, that's why we get the parliamentary procedure training, which is the second piece of it, where we can table something and come back to it. You know? So, no real changes, everybody kind of feeling like we're on a good trajectory here? Yeah? Okay. Then the second one was taking action, and one, one solution, there may be other solution, was to get additional parliamentary procedures training, so that if there are things that we want to delay or, um, adjust, we know parliamentary ways of changing things, if we don't already. I know I could always use more.
Well, I know we have that chart, but sometimes.
We have a chart that I maybe review. Where are we? Where are we in the chart?
Yeah.
If this happens, where do you go on the chart?
Well, and this was on our day in September, and we just didn't get to it, so.
We could, I mean, we had it.
It was rushed.
All year.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns about discussion and information to action? Okay, then the next one, which is three F, is standing subcommittees. So this one came out of the, um, a discussion I had with Dr. Eldridge and Brian about how our subcommittees this year have very, been very topic-based, and how there are, um, times when it's beneficial to just have standing subcommittees, so that if something comes up where a small group of board members could assist administration or provide input to administration before it goes to the board, it's helpful to have them kind of at bay, ready to go. And so the thought was that in both of their prior districts, they had had kind of three standing subcommittees that fulfilled these roles, and that it might be beneficial for us to consider something like this. And then I kind of took the discussion and came up with a structure, um, more so the titles, little chat GPT on titles. Um, so I am not married to these, I have no real, like, it has to be this way. It was more so just trying to get a conversation going about if we were to have some standing subcommittees, what would the board want them to focus on, and what would be valuable?
Are we gonna change the evaluation tool again?
I don't think we're, I don't know. We're, well, we're gonna, we're gonna update probably, yes, keep making it better.
But I guess that's under, just, the subcommittee, subcommittee would be leadership and evaluation, in case anything needs to change.
Right.
I think this makes a good idea from the governance side, because it was on policy and BOP, and they're just closely related, a lot of the discussions.
Other, the calendar, where would it fall under?
What?
The calendar?
Probably. Planning, discussion, role.
What'd you say?
Planning.
Yeah, I didn't do that.
Yeah.
Probably the leadership and evaluation. So I guess if we can just narrow it down from there, and add our subcommittees that we got down, and put them under these, that'd be a good strategy.
So like, policy and the BOP is, is under governance, and that was a one that we already had. Superintendent Evaluation Tool is one that we already had, and then Audit is one that we already had. And so now we're combining Audit and Facilities, the only thing that's not on there is Calendar. And so that, that could go under Leadership and Evaluation.
Okay.
And then who is a part of it? I don't have a strong preference, I thought it might be nice to have an officer in each one, just so that they can funnel to the board president if needed. The other option is to put all of the officers on Leadership and Evaluation, and then still have an officer on the other two, just because two members are gonna have to be on two committees, with the way, unless you have a two-person subcommittee.
I personally like this idea, because it builds capacity for future leadership positions, but open to discussion.
I think it accomplishes what we're looking to do, what we're doing, and just an expansive bit.
And that was kind of the goal that you guys talked about, was.
Yeah, so typically, in, in my previous life, we had three, just like this, and then there was a chair of each committee. So whether you choose that it's a vice president, secretary, or president, whichever, it was, you're the chair of this committee, and there were meeting minutes kept, and those, that was reported back to the, to the board.
Okay, it's not all achieved, but it can be adjusted and changed if we need.
And it was what you, you all discussed, and it was transparency.
Okay. All right, then we'll move forward with the three, and, um, I guess, and we don't have to vote on who's gonna be on them, but I think we might wanna be thinking about which one we're interested in, and then we'll give it up together.
After the June meeting.
After the June meeting, yeah. After the June meeting. Okay.
It's on the June agenda.
It's on the June. Or is it, is it this, or it's the other one? Because we also, this doesn't replace everyone's representation on district committees.
Correct.
That's probably on the June.
That's on the June, so this won't be a part of it, it won't be an addition to?
It is an addition to, because those are like district committees. But it won't be, I don't, we don't have to vote on it.
No, you appoint them.
We appoint them. But I think that we would probably appoint these in August, once we get through the June meeting with new board members.
You could also put it in the, at BOP and your, because you have to update that every year anyway, and then you vote on that.
I have, I have to update BOP too, based on the district committees.
Yes.
There's some other updates. Okay, then what about, so for schedules, do we wanna put them on the calendar or meet as needed?
As needed.
As needed.
I think some of them you kind of know you're gonna need to do, right? You probably could schedule, um, I mean, like, the evaluation tool, legislative planning, maybe really just the leadership and evaluation, those have date-dependent items.
So the, all the audit does too.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe once the committee is formed, and they, they can pick their chair, and then they set their schedule based on that, and if they already know things, marks they need to hit, then they schedule themselves. And then if it's more flexible, then they'll be more flexible.
Yeah, we, you could schedule them at five before pre-meeting, if you wanted, that's the easiest to do.
That's what we do with the audit.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else on three F? All right, three G, which is our governance core. Okay, yeah. Move to checker four. Yay!
Yay!
I made this!
That's why you can tell, because the white isn't actually white.
Don't worry about it.
No, we're gonna have to like go get my own.
Yes, we are.
You know, I don't.
You need a sign committee to fix that.
You can set committee for me, you could be the chair already.
Okay.
So I'm not gonna click it.
Yeah, I saw you.
Regret everything I said.
Saw you.
So this is checker four, the governance core, welcoming new team member to the CFP ISV Board of Trustees. We're just gonna mention, not here, isn't she? She's gonna be around yet.
Be the lead.
Welcoming new member with excitement and warmth. Um, this checker is pretty self-explanatory, so, but I want you to appreciate my graphics, my backgrounds, because that takes hours for this to internal. Address our system with coherence and the district's moral imperative. Introduce a new trustee to the board's governance culture. Orient them to the concept of a governance mindset, and reinforce the focus of existing, existing members. This is very light. I thought I had color in this one, maybe not.
No, you didn't.
Um, set up a meeting with a, you know what, I bet Hannah didn't come over to the power conference, as pretty as, you know. As pretty as I'd hoped.
Oh, that, you guys are gonna miss my thing at the end then. I spent hours. You can send, you can send it out, and we will all re-.
You'll have to appreciate the last slide anyway, or no, second to last slide, anyway. Set up a meeting with the superintendent board president, is what they suggested the book, to find out about the goals and the priorities, talents, and connections of the newcomer. In this case, it'd be the new board member who's referred to as the newcomer. Um, individual board members should reach out with a personal note or phone call, or text. Um, this gesture signals an openness and receptivity of the existing members. Arrange school site visits, of course, allow for the new trustee to meet faculty and staff at different campuses, and meet with the new trustee and the full board, um, which is one of the things we don't, this, I, Eli and I didn't have this part. Um, we have an in-depth discussion about the shared belief schools and moral imperative of the board. So if that was something we can consider doing, um.
Maybe we could do that at SLI.
I mean, because we're kind of gonna do it informally anyway, right, typically is doing.
Or it can also be a part of the August team, team of eight.
Yeah, I really should have put that in, was doing the, the reception before the August meeting. So the team of eight.
Yeah.
Um, so this is just a little quote, and my background didn't come up.
Yay!
Um, this little pink reminder on my, on my screen, but it's okay. Every time a new trustee joins the board, it's a whole new board. Um, and this is just reminders for all trustees, and there's my team. Suspend all preconceived notions of the district, the staff, and the board. You have to get up to speed and stay on top of it, which is hard to do when you're new. Be mindful of confidentiality and relationships with trustees, staff, and organizations. Avoid conflicting interests, um, and as y'all know, for me, it was PTA back then. Um, accept the realities of governance, because it is what it is. Time is your best friend, use it wisely, and be a good listener. And there's no I in team, so I was gonna put that down there, but I've been.
I love all, I love all your efforts, Ken.
Thank you, and then that's purple, so that's good, right?
That's your favorite color?
It's my favorite color. Joining a board is like jumping on a train, running at full throttle, which is exactly what it's like.
That's what I thought.
Oh, and there's my checklist, but this is the last slide, so hold on. So this is just, um, I put Cass's thought and suggestion, put our list that we have for the new board members, the new board checklist, is available, that it's already been created for our new board members. The entire document is not on here, because she didn't like it, it was too big. So we have the first page, but you get the idea, the general trip. We have that in our BOP, in the agenda's D, if anybody's looking for it. Yeah, you're okay, I was ready. Oh, shoot. Okay.
Oh, it's supposed to be.
I know what it's gonna do, it does this, right?
Yes, but it's not doing it.
Transition.
Click again.
Click again. Oh, but we saw it in our minds.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Dang it.
Yay!
I think you have to run it as a slide, did you run it as a slideshow?
Well, we, we converted it.
Oh.
And she had that stuck into PowerPoint, and then this is what you saw.
We have to.
Great. But the, um, the new way of doing presentations is Canva.
I'm so hip.
You're very hip.
Any questions?
No, I think the timing was good, obviously.
And she was here for it, so you know better.
Now you know, she knows what you know. Okay, so, did we say like the main thing on that one slide that we weren't, didn't already have worked into the system, was all of us meeting together?
Yes, I, I speak saying that because Eliana and I didn't have that.
I mean, I also, we didn't, didn't have school site visits, classroom.
Yeah, we didn't have any of that either.
Walkthroughs to interview the new trustee, the faculty, staff, and students. I understand sometimes when they get.
I understand sometimes we're not going to get to that, but aren't we already going to do something in August?
Yes.
Yes.
Right?
Throughout the year.
Throughout the year.
Convocation, like, is it like a place tour?
Convocation.
Road trip.
No.
Oh. Whatever it is, maybe we can, we can have a transaction.
We're doing something different, but maybe, but, yes, absolutely, we will have that three.
Number three.
We almost just gave away a big secret. We don't even know the secret, but we almost gave away.
But the thing, the SLI thing will just be inherently like, it might help us do, maybe, besides the amount of information, you're like, shoo.
Right. But being SLI together, going to dinner together.
And everyone on the same one. I think that's huge.
In unison, yeah.
When we got away from that, I think it was harder to do that.
We're getting all back together.
Yeah. Anyway, the wheels are supposed to be turning.
We see it.
I see it, yeah.
Our wheels are turning. Look, Randy's even.
Yes, and I'll turn together. It was really cute.
Hey, you can, I saw it.
Thank you.
I did. I thought it was awesome.
Thank you for that.
That's why I had no feedback on your presentation.
Thank you for the time that you took in.
Yes. Thank you, Kim. And it was good, very nice. All right, chapter seven. Did we?
Ellie and I are up.
No, that's.
I think it was Carolyn.
Her phone.
Oh, then.
Oh.
Oh, okay, so.
She said she sent everything to you, I guess.
Yes. She said the pod, the podcast was released to the board today.
It was very clear, I liked it.
It was very clear. So, um, to that point, reflections on chapter seven, based on Carolyn's audio on the go.
I did like her quoting the very first quote, which was our jobs are like taking a shower, one wrong turn and you're in hot water. How appropriate.
Um, I thought another important thing that was on page 122 was how the board's job is defined by the statutes. And that that's a good reminder for the public in general, that there are only so many things we can control because it's defined.
Within that same area, I had, under setting strategic direction, part of the first paragraph, and it is in setting and sustaining the direction of the school district. Only because I think sometimes sustaining gets lost.
I also highlighted the top of page 127, where it talks about a negative driver being simply informing boards and engaging boards as a positive driver. And I think that we've been working really hard and Dr. Eldridge has done a really good job of working on maybe to show that we're engaging in the work.
In the last on that page, the ongoing strategy, strategic policy direction can be clustered into two main areas, and I thought this was really key. The board's fiduciary responsibility in adopting program plans and very frameworks. And considering the conversation we had today, the responsibility that, I mean, this is why I harp on it. The board is ultimately accountable both to the state and community for the school district's financial solvency. And actions we take have an impact on the position.
And to that point, system on page 130, about three fourths of the way down, system thinkers have, understand that decisions the board makes on the budget have a profound effect on the ability of staff to accomplish strategic goals. Any other notes? I think that our deep learning commitment, it talks about that on page 133, like, that's one of the reasons why we're putting in more work studies is because we maybe have a commitment to that deep one, which is evident.
Educating the community.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anything else? Okay, so, um, for our next work study, um, we are meant to read chapter eight and chapter nine. So, would you be allowed to volunteer to lead chapter eight?
Ellie and I will go.
Ellie and I.
Do you want to do eight and nine?
I mean, if you want to.
It's only a couple pages.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy to collaborate with you.
Okay.
We'll collaborate. Okay. Whatever format you choose, audio on the go, video.
Lives.
Song and dance.
Song and dance.
Oh, yes.
Theatrical performance.
Don't touch me because I will.
Yes. Okay, so Ellie and I was gonna.
You're gonna go to work this time. Don't judge Hannah.
No judgment. Um, okay, so Ellie and I was gonna do eight and nine, and then you haven't, chats with Cass hasn't come out yet, but Dr. Eldridge and I also talked about if there are questions related to the budget that you have still after these two meetings that we've had, if you'll send them to me, I'll collect them for administration. Um, and then also if there are, we talked about, I don't remember how I worded it, but I'll say it in this way, that if there are things, questions that you think we can answer for the community about school finance that could be made into like a, a little video for the community about school finance? Um, could it kind of help? You've probably seen this, it's starting to get some traction with other districts. Um, so just kind of think about that of what you think might be important for community members to know and you can share that information with me too and then I'll pass it to administration because in June, we want to kind of talk about, we all, make sure your questions are answered, make sure that we're preparing to engage the community as a part of the June work study. So that's what we want to be thinking about between now and then, and I'll keep it in chats with Cass and Ellie.
Yes, well, I was also going to say, one of the things, um, back to Kim's point of, it's, what was the quote? It's like you're on a train at school. And so knowing that, I met with, um, Harry, our webmaster, and so we're going to create, and this kind of mirrored the bond oversight portal. We're going to create a Board of Trustees portal that houses all of board memos, anything, work study documents, chapters, so that you just have one place to go and it's not, oh my gosh, who sent me that or was that in chats with Cass? Everything will be there. We can have all those documents by category, so it will be a login that you, you will be able to see.
That's great.
And so, um, that'll be in chats with Cass too, but any category that you think would help you, also send that to me because, you know, uh, you know, I was even thinking like, you know, your favorite color is purple, like, what, an information sheet so that you wanted to buy a treat for each other or something? You know, it's anything that we need, any document, anything that, that's where we have it. So travel dates, any, you know, we can create a calendar at base, or, you know, any of that. So we're real excited about it.
Awesome.
Thanks. We're searching for emails.
Okay, so there's no more comments or questions?
Hold on, I'm not going.
Okay, so we will end the meeting at eight thirty A C M.
It's very slow.
It's audio.
No, it's on, but we don't like moving. Chris, where do you go? Chris, how do you pause this?
End string?
I don't want to end it because I think it'll cut.
Oh, you don't want to end it, okay.